I want to call this meeting. The final regional board to order, please join me in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, and with this all, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We have anybody online there? We do. All right. If you could just go around the room and introduce yourselves, you know, we're going to try to make this meeting fairly quick. Because in all honesty, I like to go support our book's topic. So. And it's a birthday.
Bill Nicky, human resources.
Thank you.
Shelley Andress, school board.
Bass Town rep.
Oh, dress on rap.
Jamie T at large rep.
Ken Shavvy Alstead rep.
Sarah Vogel, Acworth rep.
Alyssa Basam, at large.
Mr. Bushy Ford clerk, uh, worship business administrator.
Mr. Fred Director of Technology.
Chris Young, Assistant Superintendent, President of the Department.
And we have in our audience, Sarah Edmonds, high school principal.
Ryan Venice, High School Assistant Principal.
All right. Thank you all very much. Our first order of business is the approval of minutes from the September twenty ninth. Meeting. By motion. By a second. Standing up. Any changes, questions, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? All right. Fantastic. Thank you so much. All right. Seeing we have no other members of the public, we will leave. Public comment open if need be. Next orders report of our administrators. Um, we did have a leadership. I thought it was great. Looks like the first couple weeks of this new um, system is working. Um, did anybody have any questions on this report that um, for any of our administrators who are here? All right. We are also excited to welcome Sarah Edmonds here with um. A presentation on block scheduling. I know there's been some thoughts in the public and I know people around this table have had some questions, so I'd open it up to you.
Thank you. Quick joke. Uh, why did Adele cross the road?
Where did the what cross the road?
Adele.
Oh, what did it about?
Say hello from the other side.
And she brings more talent than just a minister in a high school, so thank.
Yep. Um, I'm just here to give you a little bit of information as far as I know is my as third year principal of the school. Hey. Uh, you all have this presentation, so I'm not going to read it to you. Um, but we're going to go over a few things. Uh, y'all, just in case nobody knew what block scheduling is, it's longer periods. Uh, we currently run a four by four block, seven, eight minutes long. Things that were important on this slide is that we are a CTE center offering multiple pathways. We have a forty three minute advisory. And we receive students from Keene, Manado, Conant, MC Square, Claremont, and Springfield, Vermont. So the research on block scheduling is like six of one, half dozen of the other. And what's better? So. The research is just split right in half, but I do want to bring to your attention some brain science called flow. Um, that is a state that you get in when you are immersed in an activity. Uh. It brings about deep engagement. It's, you know, when you're painting something, you're writing something and you're really into it and you forget what time it is. That's what flow is. You kind of forget where you are. Um. So lock scheduling does have more ability for us to get to that place in engagement. Does it always do? But it does give us the opportunity to get there. Forty five to fifty minutes does not give us the opportunity. Um, more, there's mixed academic outcomes. Uh, it does allow for project based learning more often. And teachers, I mean, teachers often feel like there's less of, less stress involved with it. Um, but there are planning demands on top of that. Like you have to plan for a block class. You can't. Can't really shoot from the hip like you could. Shouldn't, but you could in a forty five minute class. Um, so because I don't, I want to celebrate our good things, you know, this is just a slide that says correlation does not equal causation. However. When you have more time for science labs, you do get higher uh, scores in science tests. We have. We've been visited by Conant High School because we have higher science tests. They want to know how we do it. Um. So, you know, when the state is thirty nine percent proficient and we're forty seven percent permission, that's pretty good, I think. Should it be more? Yes, everybody should be more. But um, we're certainly doing something right in science. And I do, it doesn't mean that block scheduling is the reason, but it's just one thing. To uh, think about. So I asked the oldest person I could find in the building and that was Glenn Dion. And he said.
Glenn and I planned the first block scheduling schedule.
Okay, so Glenn said that we started about nineteen ninety nine. Um, and that this happened after a multi-year process of trying things out and uh, going to visit different schools and he said it was a big, long process.
Pretty sure it was a few years before that, because I think I had two years of the block and I graduated in ninety eight, so.
He, you may have been piloting a couple of things, maybe. Who knows? This is Glenn's memory, but it was around this time in the late nineties, we shall say. Late nineties.
Late ninety.
Late ninety.
Late nineties. Um, so I took a couple of surveys just to like. Get the temperature of how people felt about the block schedule, like just the other day. Um, this is the faculty. Do you think it's effective? Eighty three point eight percent say they do. Thirteen say in some aspects. Nobody says no, but some say yes.
Could you just remind me how many uh, surveys went out? How many, like thirty seven is a percentage of how many?
About, I would say.
It says thirty seven response.
Thirty seven responses out of maybe fifty.
Okay.
So it's a good chunk.
Yes, thank you.
The students are a different story when we get to the students. Um. This is some of the, you can read it yourself. This is some of the qualitative data about, you know, what are the, what do they think? You know, uh, there's some good stuff and some bad stuff in there. Um, which, but for instance, um, longer periods allow for a deeper dive into material. There's fewer transitions. Um. And then there's, you know, some things like it's imperative for CTE classes, which is biggest, the biggest thing. Um. And just see how I'm sending this part. Oh, and then challenges. Uh, time management. Teachers really have to know what they're doing in the block schedule. Uh, attendance has a bigger impact for sure. Um, so there's a lot of, uh. There was, they definitely told us about the challenges as well, so you can read through those. Uh, the student survey, this was pretty out of, I got a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty nine, a hundred and fifty responses out of four hundred and. Where are we at now?
Four sixty.
Four hundred and sixty kids. Oh.
Freshmen as well, because they need to go to freshmen as well, seeing as how this would be their first.
I fed it to everybody. Um.
It's not good.
It's not a lot of responses, no.
Thirty two percent.
No, but it was just a quick survey.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and this is where they ended up.
Split.
Two thirds positive, one third meh. Uh, and then, you know, there's.
It's one third positive, one third neutral. Means they don't really care.
They're correct. They don't care. Uh, how do you feel about the number of classes to take each day? Also, they like the, the four classes a day. Uh, in this response group. And then. Uh, ability to focus. I wanted to ask this question.
Yeah.
Uh, I focus better in longer classes. Only twelve percent of the, of asked. It's only thirty two percent. Uh, thirty three point three percent said it depends on the subject matter, which is a hundred percent true. It depends on the teaching style as well.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, my focus is about the same, another almost thirty percent. And uh. Oh, twenty five percent, sorry. And it's harder is another thirty percent. Um, so.
I have to say, this, pretty honest, question really does concern me.
Hmm.
When I look at this one as compared to the previous screen where eighty four percent of students say it's great. Yeah, they only take four classes. They think that's great. They don't want to maybe. Add because it's harder, but if they're having a hard time focusing on those classes, I think we are doing them a disservice.
Again, it's only a hundred and fifty responses out of four hundred and sixty.
Forty four children who are saying they may have a problem, so it's worth looking at.
Yes.
So. Also, I've been hearing some about the possible financial implications of block scheduling. I couldn't find a lot of research about that. Um. Really, the costs come at the beginning when you start it, uh, getting things implemented. Um, I guess. Logistics of setting up block scheduling. I don't see a lot of cost implications, but I'm sure that somebody else has. I'd love to see what somebody else has.
Mm-hmm.
Chris Balding, I thought, sent data to the school board. Uh, it's, it's a concern of the budget committee.
I have not seen any of the data.
Find it and forward it to.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um. So we are a CTE center and uh, this is, this is probably the biggest, the biggest thing that um. So Keen, CCC is a block schedule. Um, Concord Regional Technology Center, block. Chrono Regional Technology Center, block. Dover Career Center, block. Out of the thirty one total careers, uh, CTE centers and the high schools that we contacted, twenty three use a block or modified block schedule. That's seventy four percent of those contacted. Ninety five of those responded. Some, seven didn't respond. The one that we found that didn't use a block, CTE centers in Berlin, New Hampshire. And they're going to live life a little different up there anyway. So.
They might have a lot in common with us, so I, I'd love to find out why.
Berlin?
Well, just because.
Social economics.
Definitely. They have um.
They're their own. I don't think they're going with other people. I think they're their own thing. We are in a, that's the next part, is that we're in a region thirteen CTE agreement. And part of that says that we must align our calendars as best as possible.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it makes for less scheduling content, conflicts. It makes for um, kids. You know, if you're going to go over to Keen or you're going to go to RBTC and you're going to miss three classes. That's, that's going to be a problem. If you're in one block, like you, you're missing it. There's a difference and this is.
So how does it work now? Do you have skinnies on both sides of that? So they're only missing skinnies? What are the kids missing?
They are blocked out for those classes, but they're um, they are going to that class. And they are going for the block, so they're not missing the other classes.
Okay.
They still are coming back and taking classes.
How is that possible then? How does our, how does our schedule? How does our schedule accommodate for their travel time without them missing anything?
The blocks are longer. They have more time for travel.
Oh, so the blocks on this side are longer than.
Not necessarily.
What their blocks are at the CTE centers. That's the only way it would work.
They miss two blocks.
Yes.
They miss two blocks because, and that, that allows them time for travel.
Yes. Transportation is part of their block. Correct. Transportation is part of their block.
So when they go to CTE, they give up a block.
They give up for travel. For travel, yes.
So they essentially can take three classes a day. Yeah, versus four if they don't travel to a CTE center. Yeah.
How's that affect their credibility?
What, what, what you, what you, what the guidance department, can I?
Oh, by all means.
What, because, because I did this with kids a lot. Um, what the guidance department does is work closely with that, with the kids. Um, in terms of planning out what classes they would like to take. Throughout their, their, their high school career. So if they decide that they want to go to a, this, to a CTE program. Um, that's during their junior and senior, that would be during their junior and senior year. So they need to make sure that they are. Um, passing their classes in freshman and sophomore year to be able to make, to be able to allow them the, the. And, and that they're taking the credits that they need to take for their, they, they really have to plan out their time.
So they're not graduating under the higher credit.
They can.
They can.
They can? They have enough time, block time to do it?
They do.
Okay.
If they want to.
That's all part of the. When you sit down with your kiddo or the guidance counselor sits down with the kiddo in freshman sophomore year. On what they would like to do. They need to make sure that they are already in line with what they may want to do as a senior. Because they got to make sure they have everything.
At least have the option open to them.
Yeah. Yeah, totally. And I used it, uh, when I was, when I was teaching here, I used it. It was an incredibly strong tool. Because kids wanted to go, that, that was, that, that was really important to them. And so we talked a lot about you have control over this. And so if you pass your class. If you pass your English class, you have to have four credits of English. And to be able to go and do your CTE later on, you ha, you can't be taking two Englishes later on. If you want to um, go to that CTE program. So it was a high incentive to pass their English class. Or pass their world history, which Bill Renaro always got it.
Well, the course, I, I understand that, because there, there were requirements for the state to.
What I think is more important than like the, the scheduling aspect is the time spent in the material. We are also a CTE center. So having, there's, it would be very difficult to run animal science in a fifty minute block. It would be very difficult to do a lot of our CT things and we are building next year. We have a pet science that we're adding. Um. And um, hoping to add criminal justice after that. So there's a lot of opportunities for our CT department to grow. Um, and uh, that's more, you know, where. What I think about when I think about the scheduling. Do we have time to do these? Do these classes and get into it? And, you know, there's, there's some good. Thoughts about, well, can we do year long maths? Because that is something, and that's something that we're thinking about as a school, because we may need to. You know, extend the math. Um, on the whole. Uh, I believe that the blocks get lost. This is, that's not just my belief, but I believe the block scheduling is. Uh. Good thing, well, now, currently, we're in what's uh, of the best of it as far as CTE goes. So.
By July.
And the other classes too.
I guess. I guess I would be cautious about the student surveys. Because when Sarah brings up something like animal science, where most kids really love that class. And they want to be in it for an extended period of time. But then they go to a class that might be algebra and they're like, yeah, I don't want to be in here for ninety minutes. I will tell you that I think coming to the high school and, and having kids transition over to block class. Has made a huge difference. The, the amount of material that they get. In just a small window is not, I don't feel it's enough in the, in the middle school. Just as they're starting to get into the material, we're calling it a day.
Mm-hmm.
And, and they're moving on. And then they go into another class and they got this small window and just, like I said. Thirty, forty minutes into it, they wrap it up. Whereas this, they can literally sit there and there's going to be classes that they hate, that they are not. Going to want to sit in. I would be one of those students. If you put me in algebra and then made me do a survey, well, not made me, but. And then I did the survey, I would definitely be one of those students that'd be like, nope, don't like this.
And that's, we'll find that in anything. I've taught in both block and in traditional schedules. Um, as an English teacher, the block was by far my favorite as I was able to really dig deep into subject matter with the students. I don't know what it's like. It's a, well, I do know. It's like it's a math teacher. I can see it. It's more difficult. Um, so. You know, oh, a lot of our teachers, they've had training in it, but how to make, break up a block schedule to make it as palatable as possible for the kids that aren't really like. Into algebra. They do, we do a lot of project based learning and, and. Make things more real life for kids. We have the opportunity to make things more uh. Reality based for them when we are in a block schedule.
But that's the trade off. Like I'm going to sit in a class that I don't like for a little bit longer. So I'm going to go to this next class that I really love and I get an extended time. And that's kind, but that's, that's student life. And I, and I don't really unders, I guess I'm not sure where. This line of discussion is coming from, because. I think if you were to talk to kids outside of a survey, the majority of them. I think the majority of them like the block scheduling because they get more time with the stuff that they really love. And then they put in one of those not so great classes in their blocks and it's only for a short window. So it's ex, extended, right? But then the next semester or whatever they call it, they're off doing something else.
And that's the part I didn't put in this presentation is that with block scheduling in a four by four, we offer our students a chance to not be behind a year. Um, if, if a freshman comes in and blanks Smith, uh, um, English nine. Um, they can take it second semester and still be, you know, pretty ready, get all their cores if they pass it, get their cores that needed to be taken. That's another positive of the block schedule is that where kids are. Not so far behind if they do have a hard transition into high school, which happens.
The other thing that um, that we work with a lot, um, I. I was originally very against the block schedule because when, when we were first, uh, uh, when we were first exploring it. Um, one, it was, it was very different. I never taught in that. It was, it was, and, and I taught special education. And um, and so I was like, how am I, you know, how am I going to do, do study hall, you know, because we used the resource room during study halls and we didn't want to pull kids out and all of these things. And what we really, what, once we got into it and we're doing it, what I really found where there were, there were many. Pieces, I, I became such a born again block schedule person. It was um, I, I found that I was able to, there were so many life lessons I was able to work with my kids on. Um, okay, I don't like sitting in world history for, for ninety minutes. Okay. Or I don't like sitting in algebra for ninety minutes. All right. Well, you know, when you're out in, in the world and you're done with high school. There's going to be times when you're going to have to do stuff that you don't want to do and you got to do it for, if you want to do, if you want to do that, you got to do this. And, and you, you just got to do it. You got to buckle down and figure out how it's going to work. And um, and I worked and I was able to do a lot of um, team teaching with teachers. And go in and work with teachers on how to, uh, how to modify lessons so, or. To make the accommodations for students who had different learning styles and break up their block so that um, because I taught. At that time, we did individualized classes and I taught the individualized classes and um, and I found my kids could not stay. On doing math or doing English or doing whatever I was trying to teach them um, for the, for, for ninety minutes, but I could, they could do. Um, we would do, I would break up my, my block so that it was as if I had um. Like I'd do fifteen minutes of this and then we would have a, then we would have an up and walk around and then we'd do another fifteen minutes. So we really did, there were a lot, there was a lot of changes. And, and I worked with the teacher, with other teachers on how to do that in their, in their classes. And so, which made it so that you could. You could keep those kids involvement. And that was a huge piece.
This brings up a excellent point. I just want, the last piece of research that I didn't put here that I'd like to bring to your attention. Uh, is from John Hattie, who did a meta-analysis of the things that affect uh, student learning. And the number one thing, the number one thing that he found in his meta-analysis was that. Collective teacher self-efficacy is the most important thing to student academic, academic uh, engagement and achievement. Collective teacher self-efficacy. And that is a teacher's belief that they can do it. That they can help kids move forward. So if we have us, if we had a school that was like, we don't like block scheduling. We don't, this isn't working for us. If we had teachers who are like, this is not the way, then I think that. We should look into changing it. We do have teachers that believe collectively that this is the way. So keep that in mind. John Hattie's book uh, is really great if you're looking, if you want to look at that.
I'm not sure there's much discussion, sorry. But I think we could just end the discussion with the fact that we've, since I've been on this board, we have promoted CTE courses. We've promoted that in this school. We've promoted it to the students. We've promoted it to communities and parents. We have a signed agreement with Cheshire Career Center. And when you look at what Sarah presented tonight. All of the other CTE programs are working off our block. So. I, I, I mean, unless we're going to change our CTE. Situation, I, I think. On some levels, it's a, it's a mute point. Let's have a.
Karen, I really had something she wanted to.
Well, I wanted to ask, because I, and I, I appreciated your presentation. I looked at it earlier and, and I thought it was very well done. Um, can, is it possible to do a combination of block versus?
There are lots of different uh. Like.
Models.
Models of block schedule. When I was in high school, I did a A B. Day swapping where I never knew what day it was and didn't know which books to bring to school and, you know, that type of thing. Um. So yes, there's, 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 there's all sorts of different models. I urge that you trust us as educators. And that is, I'll just say that back.
Just one more question. Um, why are we looking at this? Is it because the budget committee asked for it?
It could be, although.
Okay.
I was curious why. Email I sent in August didn't get forwarded to anybody. Sorry, I didn't follow up on it. But yes, the budget committee brought it up in August at a meeting, questioning the difference in costs. Um, so it might absolutely be why it made it onto the agenda.
I'm not sure.
I.
Difference in cost.
Well, there's a lot of stuff.
I think we do trust you as educators.
I don't think it has to do with trust.
But I think there's also a responsibility we have to ask the questions about, is this actually doing what it's supposed to? And I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sold on those individual surveys. Nor am I completely sold on the data that's in the public. If it's fifty fifty, maybe it's worth looking at to make sure that it's still relevant. We've been in this for twenty five years plus. Teachers who are here are likely only having taught in the block. Do they know what it's like to teach in a six or seven or eight period a day? So maybe, you know, we know change is hard. We know thinking about change is hard. So. To just cut, launch, say, say that. Teachers believe it because maybe they don't know any different. It's, I think, worth researching. I don't think it's something we should just brush off and say, we think it's good right now. We should just not.
I certainly am not brushing anything off. That's why I did this presentation. I want to give as much uh. Information as I can.
I'll bring it back to the budget committee. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's.
If I hadn't had a crazy three days, I probably would have told them to please come tonight so that they could have asked some questions.
If they have questions.
Yeah, so maybe they may reach out.
Yeah, then to the panel and.
Yeah.
They'll get it to me. I'll answer the questions.
And it's been discussed multiple times over the last eighteen years.
I'd like to have a report on what it would mean if we took, if we came out of block and what. What financial impact that would have and what possible negative impacts that would have on our ability to be a CTE program.
Yeah.
I think that.
Let me be clear that I do not know the financial impact.
I know, I'm not looking at you.
Okay.
No, I'm not looking at you, but I, I don't want to lose, I don't want to lose what we have built in our CTE program.
And continuing to build.
And.
Know it's exciting, the things that are coming.
I want to say also that, that it has a strong impact on the science classes. Because they're able to do, um, they're able to do their labs much more, much more efficiently.
That is what the research shows, right? Sciences get a boost and math, math, that's something we get.
Math is, math is the tough one. Yeah.
And there is quite a bit of research actually that English classes struggle this way as well in terms of the literature they can actually cover. Because it's so short and so they don't have the long term to read a few chapters and discuss it in, in short moments. So they actually read fewer books. Over the course of their high school career. So there's a lot of fine pieces that we haven't touched on, nor could we even begin to do. Over the course of their high school career. So there's a lot of fine pieces that we haven't touched on, nor couldn't even begin to do, so.
You lose some breadth, right? And. Depth is, we're always looking for depth of knowledge, right? We want deeper rather than wider in education is what we're looking for. So, that, as an English teacher, that is what I would say. I would go with depth rather than breadth.
Jamie.
So having never lived through block scheduling, cause I'm that old, um. And it's a relatively new concept and you've been out of school forty-three years. So, my question would be probably more directed to special ed-related. Challenges. How does, are we, do we make accommodations? For our block scheduling when students who may have challenges in keeping. You know, an attention span that long, so we have, obviously, we've been doing a long time, so I'm sure they have been, but maybe share with the public. You know, what some of those are so that if that question does come up, we can say, yes, we've, you know, we're treating all of the students and taking care of all of them.
It's not even just special education, it's what's best practice in this model, right? So, um. We have a student center that kids can go to if they need to take time away from the class, work on something one-on-one. There's, it's staffed by uh, a teacher. Um, as far as special education needs go, um, there's pull-out, there's push-in, there's, we have. Um, it's not just for special education, it's for everyone, cause that is what best practice is.
The model.
Yeah.
So we maintain another area for students if they need to just have a break.
Yes, and we have, um, we have multiple ways of allowing students a break, um. You know, they can. We, we do have a lot of ways, especially special education students have different areas that they can go to.
Okay.
And different people they can see for different.
Can I add one last thing?
One.
Um.
No, I just meant, I was gonna say, and then I could, we're gonna move to the next.
We can move on, we can move on, this, yeah, it's kind of. The other thing that I found, uh, when people, I, I. Let me get my thoughts together. Um, one of the concerns that I hear people say is. That, that students take a, a math class and then they don't take a math class again until the next year. And they miss a semester of math or English or, you know, whatever. And um, one of the things that, um, that, that I looked at when I was working with my kids, um, was. That, um, I was getting them ready for whatever post-secondary stuff they were gonna do. And whether it was going to a four-year college, whether it was gonna go, whether it was going to a training program, whether it was going to, you know, whatever. But in looking at going to any kind of training program, college kind of experience, you're in block.
Yeah.
And so, um, and, and you have to plan, you have to plan out your, what you wanna take. And you, you have, you have to get used to doing that. And so it's giving them. An opportunity to learn about doing that at an earlier age.
And I've said, you know, I've, I've used that argument, well, we're preparing them, mostly people are like, well, we don't need to prepare everybody for college. And that's true, but it doesn't just prepare for college, uh, technical schools, all sorts of trainings.
Any kind of training, yeah.
Um, it prepares for work that you have to sit in for eight or nine, ten hours a day without. Having a special place to go, which I wish I did at times, but.
I wish I could just stay in the place. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to give you this information. Um, I appreciate all of you and all your hard work. I know it's, it's not an easy job. On the board.
Well, thank you. This was great and I appreciate the start to the conversation because I really do feel like it's gonna continue, so.
The good and the bad continue after March. It's been continuing for nineteen years.
It has, and there's people that want to be part of the conversation. All right. And we have the financial.
So the financial report was, it's attached to your agenda and, um. So in looking at it, so we'll press off on the revenue. I wanna just point out that, um. In my view with the D R A, um, our special education aid is, um, going to be more than we had anticipated. Um, they give you, so that there were changes in the law and so the state is supposed to. Pay out eighty percent a minimum of what your proposed allocation is. I don't know if I said that correctly, but it's an eighty percent threshold. In the past, it's been, um, uh, much lower. We've often gotten sixty percent or something like that. I'm still a little bit skeptical, so I went a little bit conservative and used a seventy-five percent, um. For our revenue, estimated revenue instead of the eighty percent. But that's still more than a hundred and seventy-five thousand that we had budgeted for, for this year. So we're gonna, we're expecting at least two hundred and eighty-three thousand, so.
Excellent. When do you think you'll have a final?
So we will, um, receive that information. The payout is usually sometime in December. And so when we, when we actually see it, that's what we know, what we, what we really get. So it might be a little bit more than the two eighty-three, but it's not substantially.
Regardless, it goes in the right direction, so I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um.
More good news from you.
More good, well, I try.
I wanna copy where you got that.
The eighty percent?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I can send it to you. It was from art. I mean, the, the state sent, actually, the state agile out and.
Yeah.
Um, actually, it might have come from special ed. Anyway, I can share that with you. Um, so.
One was sixty-nine percent.
Interesting, um. So then, when I was looking at the expenses, um, it's, um. I guess it's only through September, but we're still like. Fine-tuning our payroll and payroll is the bulk of this. And so what I did, when I, I found some variances here that I wasn't expecting. Um, so, Sandra, please don't get too excited because I. No, no, I'm not, I, I. What, when I dug in, I'm finding that I have some positions that, um, the budget doesn't align with the positioning code. So we're working on, um, investigating that and I just didn't have the answers to give to you before now. Um, I can tell you that for psych, uh, services and, uh, occupational therapy, that we. Haven't been able to fill some positions. We had two contract services out. Um, but we're trying to do all of that within our budget, so, um, I don't know that, that I'm. These are the variances that showed up at the end of September. I just don't have all the answers for you yet and I'm working on that.
Okay, so maybe for October, we can have a little deeper.
Yes, thank you.
She will.
Okay.
I have no doubt. He's been knocking out of the park this, these last couple of meetings.
I just wanna keep that record. Um, so then, okay, so that was all my great news. So now, health insurance rate, uh, we received our rate on Friday. So what's important to know. And understand is that historically, uh, Health Trust has provided what they call a G M R, which is your gross maximum rate. That was the maximum increase rate. They would give that to us in October and then in. Jeez. Yeah, December, yeah, they would give us, they would give us the actual increase. Um, which was always a little past our, our budgeting season. They changed that last year and now when they give us information in October. It is the stick in the sand, the, you know, the sand. That is our rate.
Well, that's good news.
That's great news.
We're just trying to stay with it.
So our increases for this upcoming.
It doesn't allow you to get massage this summer.
Our, um, our average increase over the four plans that we offer is about twenty-one percent. And so we have costed this out based on our current, uh, participation and subscriptions. Um, so based on our current staffing and the plans that they have subscribed to and our current models for contribution between. And cost sharing between the district and the employee. We're looking at an increase of about eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for next year's budget.
Okay.
Um.
We shouldn't get a million-dollar bill, right?
Yes, this is, this is true. It's not a bill. It's a, it's, it's a budget so we can plan for.
Plan for it.
But that, that's where we're at. So what we are doing is we are talking, uh, with Health Trust to see, um. What sort of plans, optional, you know, plans we could offer, um, in particular, a high deductible plan. Um, which is usually has a lower premium cost, uh, but we have to look at, you know, if we convert to that, you know, what does that mean for the employees in the district? Um, there are also a handful of districts that are looking at forming some sort of a consortium for some self-funding model. Um, that have reached out and asked to be, uh, part of that study so we can get information, um, that would be, I guess. Beneficial for us in the fact that we already have that trust that's, um, in existence that would help with that, I think.
Is that very similar to what you used to manage here, Jamie?
Uh-huh. I, I don't have, I don't have a lot of information about that yet, but, um, I don't think we would have to manage it in-house. I think there would be. A third party that would be working with us, but.
Be a T P A. That was the issue with keeping the funding the way it was, because you have to have. One person, and at the point I was here, it was me, had to sign. And you're putting, you're, you're making yourself personally liable, basically, for. Any HIPAA or other types of regulatory violations, so, so. A lot of TPAs didn't want to deal with that, so it sounds like maybe they found somebody.
Well, they have, they have, um, a third part, so I think it's, um, a board member, perhaps. It's associated with one of the districts that is.
Looking at it.
Looking at it and trying to put together some sort of a model, so they're, they're in the, the industry, um, the market industry. Um, so, you know, we're, we're looking at that, so we're trying, we're looking at other options, you know, we, um. You know, we mean, we're looking at all, we're looking at all of our options, um.
So more info to come.
More info to come, but it is, it is a huge hit. I mean, that's.
Million dollars.
On the top of, of the budget.
I was trying to say positive.
I know.
I just gotta keep throwing that number out there.
Have to be realistic.
I have one other quick question. This eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar increase is for FY twenty-seven.
Yes.
Does that include the contributions by teachers and staff or is that only our portion?
Um, that is our portion. That's our cost.
That's actually like another twenty percent.
Yeah, that's our cost.
Wow, can, can I just, um. I'm just, I got a, I, I got an email from, um, the New Hampshire Association for Special Education Administrators today. Um, that said, um, I'll just read the first sentence. It says, as you might have heard on Friday, President Trump. Set in motion layoffs that will decimate the U S Department of Education. And will leave the Office of Special Education Programs with only two staff members to implement all aspects of I D A.
Great.
Um, so, are, are, are we, are we aware of that and are we, um. Are we thinking about how that's gonna?
Yes, I'm aware of that.
Yeah, you got the same email, I'm sure.
I mean, I also, us, reached out to me on Friday about that, um, so. We're all waiting to see what's gonna happen with that. The last I heard is that our money from the federal was allocated to New Hampshire. And we have it, but I don't, I can't verify that till the money's released.
Right, so we're still waiting for that.
Correct, but my understanding is that, so we're, we're in okay standing in our state as of today on that. And the other question is. Do these layoffs occur immediately or are they ripped as of December? So I haven't got clarity on that yet.
Oh, okay.
Possibility that these people got their notices, but they're actually now leaving that position until December. So there's still some questions.
Just not getting paid right now.
So, but I am keeping up to speed on that, so I'll be able to, I just didn't bring it up yet because without accurate information, I don't want people to get too stressed yet.
Go ahead, Jamie.
Right, well, and to your point, I mean, um, Misty put out the email from New Hampshire School Boards Association that actually has a link in there that. Has a three-page document which tells us what some of the challenges might be if this goes along with them, so.
Mm-hmm.
So they're, you know, they're being proa- there are places at the state being proactive to try to allow us to. Plan.
There's a state meeting tomorrow, if you want to join, I can send that out.
Oh, is it?
For special education directors. They're asking everybody to come together and engage in a conversation.
Oh, I'm gonna be flying, but maybe it's at a time when I'm gonna be sitting in Chicago, so.
More going to, you know.
All right, are there questions about health insurance or anything else for Lori?
Hmm, no, I think we should. We should, we should just not talk to Lori for the rest of the night right now.
All right, well, thank you very much for the report. Is there anything else you wanna tell us?
No, um, uh, well, no, I don't think so.
All right.
End on a high note, Lori.
All right, um, next order of business is the personnel approval, a very small list.
Make a motion.
So I have a second. Any questions, concerns, thoughts? Seeing none, all in favor?
All right.
All right, any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Um, the overnight trip approval. Um, Mariah Bascom was going to be here to present this to us, but she had plenty of other things to do. Um, for her family and whatnot, so I offered to talk about it for her. So in our packet, there was some great information included about what the itinerary is and the information about the trip. This is a trip that, uh, these schools have gone on several times. They're also using Explorica again this year. I went on the trip last year, it was wonderful. Are there any questions or concerns with the documentation? Um, can I have a motion to approve that trip in the middle of twenty-two, twenty-six? But again, second. All right, any other questions? All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we welcome them to a fantastic trip and we'd love to hear about it when they get back.
Are you going this year?
I don't know. I really like to. It was fantastic and we had the best of the school kids, but I don't know if I can make it fit in April.
Oh, I think I'm gonna take some time off and just surprise my daughter somewhere along the route, but I don't know.
I will tell you, there were several times when I looked up in, in the Capitol, for example. And there were parents there and I was like, wait a minute, who's talking to our kids? But I knew, when I finally realized what was going on, like I actually knew the parents, but it happens.
Yeah, I'm not going to.
No, you won't.
She would hate me.
I went and kind of had to ignore my own child because he was like.
Oh, yeah.
So I was everybody else's chef. Uh, it, they are great. Anyway, so yes, it's wonderful.
You'll like your weekend eventually.
Nah, I'm.
Are we go, are we going to the donations?
Yes, we are.
So, uh, can I just say really quick? I absolutely love this passing the PA program. I don't know who came up with it.
I'll tell you who.
Yes, who?
Tim Chandler, one of our counselors, and we got some good press.
Oh, I, I thought it was.
Run by our pyramid.
Yeah, yeah.
Brilliant.
Yeah, and if there is any, if you guys need, you know. Some money for next year, please, by all means, I, I don't, I'm not saying I'm gonna do two hundred and fifty, but. I would definitely love to, to donate if you needed it, um. Hopefully, it's gonna be done next year. I thought it was, it was fantastic and it made the Keen Sentinel, which is pretty impressive, so.
Yeah.
Kudos to everybody.
That donated this year and I think after seeing this year's, we'll have a lot of people wanna be a.
Oh, it was just great. And they got swag.
All, all about it. I love it. So fantastic. Our next order of business, cause I really do think we're on a grid truck, is. Enter into non-public session. Can I have a motion to enter into non-public for A and K?
I make the motion to enter into non-public for A and K.
We're gonna have a ten-minute non-public?
We're gonna do our best. It's gonna take a little longer. I'm gonna miss K S off and I am late.
Get it. We need a roll to go into.
Yeah, I need a second.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
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 Alyssa, yes. All right, thank you. All right, can I have a motion for a journey?
Motion to a journey.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you all. Thanks for waiting.
Sure.